All right, we will open the planning board meeting for Tuesday, March twelfth, twenty twenty four. This is being conducted in a hybrid manner pursuant to the general laws. Uh, if anybody is recording that is fine, you just need to let us know. Okay. Uh, we are recording this and this will be put on our webpage after it is completed. Um. Seven o'clock town planners report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Uh. Just a few items to discuss this evening. Um. I think everyone may have seen an email I sent out with a poll. To. Uh, determine what the best fit. For meeting with the select board and others to discuss uh, chapter sixty one. Uh, properties as they come out and the policies and procedures we follow. And for exercising or determining a desire to exercise the first right of refusal. Um. If you haven't responded kindly, uh, do so, uh. Given a series of Monday select board meeting dates in April and May, uh, and we'll all see where the best fit falls. Uh, just a little bit of news, uh, for upcoming meetings. For the. Process to accept the Cory Drive and Cody Lane, the planning board does need to, uh. At least assess the matter and provide a recommendation to town meeting. So I will initiate a process, uh, with the DQW director. Um, so that we can look at the technical, uh, points, um, of the infrastructure out there and use that as a springboard. For the recommendation. Upcoming business, uh, we'll, uh, at the moment, it looks like we're planning to have a public hearing related to. The modification to the short-term rental bylaw that was advised coming out of the, uh, state attorney general's office. Um. So. I will coordinate that request with the select board, and I'm also going to refine, uh, the individual steps of town council. Just so that I fully understand, uh, the parameters surrounding the necessity for that, uh, public here. Uh, we have also received, uh, the definitive subdivision and stormwater management permit application for, uh. Oak Ridge Estates off of Morgvining Road. Uh, so I will set a date for us to open, um. Those hearings. And that's it for business.
Okay. All right, seven oh five, public comment. Anybody have anything tonight that is not on the agenda? They want to bring to the board's attention. Hearing none, seeing none. Um. What do we have? Seven oh eight? Um. Six sixty-two A. Um, public hearing, seven ten P M. Post storage, self-storage facility, special permits, site plan approval and stormwater management permit application. Um. Did we have something to read or was that just a conversation?
Uh, this is just the conversation, but it is the applicant requesting, um. We will. Uh, he requested to continue for the next two days.
Um, which would get you to. The.
The second meeting. I'm sorry, which you do not have to be the first meeting. Fair enough. I don't have to work for that six. Uh, so April ninth.
Uh, do I hear a motion to continue six sixty-two A College Highway to seven ten P M on April ninth, is that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Dave Spina so moved.
You could sing your second.
Do a roll call vote like the Dordi I.
Dave Spina I.
You've got singer, I.
David Sutton, I.
Jessica Thor and I.
Okay. Um. With a few minutes here, why don't we? Um. See. Is Randy just here for that?
Yes, I believe so.
He was here and he's.
He's here.
Oh, there, yep. He's hiding behind Marcus. All right. Um, we can do this quickly, Randy. So why don't you come on up if you're just here for this?
You know, my thank you.
I'm sure you have better things.
You have a chair.
Mm-hmm. Sit here on the line.
Well, great.
Uh, for the record, Randy Brown, ninety-five Fred Jackson Road. I'm here on behalf of my mother, Fred Brown of thirty-nine John Mason Road, also owner of forty-one of fifty-one John Mason Road. This is Tony Marzullo, uh, thirty-nine John Mason Road, my mother's husband. So we're here to, uh, ask for a, uh, site plan review on a proposed solar, a ground mount solar facility at the New England Disco Center. So I think we're mostly familiar with it, with the property. We've been here for a few times over the past few years. Um, we, uh, are looking for a ground mount system on the property. So I think, John, if you don't mind, just pulling that map up.
Absolutely.
Maybe just one second here. I have your copies here as well, but. We do meet all the setback requirements as noted in the bylaws, um. Requirement is at least hundred, one hundred fifty feet, which we do meet. And, uh, Tony's here with an actual background. If you have any questions, he's here to answer them.
What was the total square footage of the? And I suppose.
Uh, about two hundred square feet total. That's probably on the conservative side. Yeah.
Yeah.
This is just standalone power. It's not tied into the grid or anything like that. This is just for your, your, your consumption?
Own use on the property, correct. Yep. We tried getting electric here, just too costly and too, too lengthy of a process, so. Was it gonna happen?
It seems like where the blue boxes, that's kind of opposite from where the trailer, you, we bought the clubhouse. Is so it would be on the other side of the drive guy than from those buildings is there?
Yeah, that's not a, uh, current site plan, uh, but you can see where the construction is. That's where the, um, where the, right off the parking lot to the. Just would be southwest of the blue box. That's where the current clubhouse is. And then the, uh, trailer is just south of that. All along that left-hand side.
What do you want from the side of the?
Well, it, it fits better there with the property, just the surrounding uses. We have a putting green, um, on that side of the property and we have a driving range on the south side. So that's, that's the best place where it fits. It's, it's a little.
Sort of placement for it. So it's kind of out in the open.
Uh, we haven't proposed that and we could maybe look at some screening, just some, you know, vegetative screening, um, but.
If you have kids pulling, pull into the parking lot and kids run out and you put panels or something just right there by the. We'd want some sort of fence of some sort to just kind of kitty it away from. Public area.
Yeah.
Or a road frisbee.
Yeah, yeah. There's no holes. I said that the, um. There's no holes on that side of the property right there. So I want to see if Frisbee or disc hitting that spot, but. Um. I, I would suggest maybe some screening, just some vegetative screening, just to keep it hidden, a little hidden, but. It's only going to be seen by people that are using and on the property. You may not, you're several hundred feet away from the road. You have to squint and look real hard to find it, look at, see it from the road.
Understood. I just user on property.
Yep, understood.
Um, any other, uh, questions from the board?
It's a big set of panels, no one else tracking.
Yeah, no, it's fixed. I did, I didn't present this with John, but I, um. I think it's a ground mount, typical ground mount system.
Just start.
Yeah, it's like, you know. Be about eight feet tall on the backside.
And it's, um, stationary?
Stationary, yes, correct.
And that's already clear, I mean, it's.
It's all cleared. There's no need for any vegetative cutting, correct?
Okay. Well, anything else from the board members?
No.
Oh, good. All right. So, yeah, I mean, I would. Um. I mean, I think with. The vegetative screening, which I think kind of makes sense, the board seems to. Uh. Recommend that and. You know, just I would comply with the bylaw as far as, uh. It's, let me just pull it up. Uh, vegetative, vegetative screening. Effectively screen the installation within five years of installation, maybe so. Nothing right there. It's not going to be that tall, I don't believe.
No, we can find some short shrubbery to cover it. That'd be fine. Yep.
Okay. Um.
Trying not to block this.
Don't want. Kind of reproductive.
Yeah, let me, I'm just, give me one second, Randy. I'm just trying to making sure there's nothing else, um. Yeah, that's it. All right. Um. So I would just say if you can just submit something that. Building needs what the. Um. Vegetative screening is just so we can have it and we can.
Sure.
Um. See it, but subject to that, um. What is the site plan review?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, just being a lovely.
Oh.
I don't know what I have. I don't have that one. I have to add to my list of standard language.
All right. Um. All right. So do I hear a motion? Um. To recommend the. Um. Site plan, uh, provided for. Forty-one fifty-one John Mason Road for a small-scale ground-mounted photovoltaic system, uh, subject to. Uh, review and approval by the board of the. Screening, uh, plan.
Dave Spina so moved.
Second, take a second.
Do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, I.
Dave Spina, I.
Take a singer, I.
David Sutton, I.
Jessica Thor and I.
Okay. All set.
Thank you. That was.
Thank you.
Behind him on.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay if you want. All right, um. Seven.
Fifteen.
Um. Yep, seven, and but seven twenty, we're kicking out by two.
That's correct.
All right, seven fifteen, public hearing, two fifty College Highway. Proposed renovation, reconstruction of a pre-existing non-conforming multifamily dwelling.
Mr. Levesque. Um, Mr. Chairman, um, Levesque, Levesque Associates, brief on this one, we're going to request to withdraw without prejudice. Um, and look at, uh, avenues for, uh, reestablishing these forty-eight section sixes. Grand father, so, um, so we respectfully request to withdraw the application without prejudice. And then, uh, you might see us in the future.
Okay, um. So I'll make a motion, uh, or do I hear a motion that, uh, this be withdrawn or that board accepts the withdrawal without?
Dave Spina so moved.
You can sing your second.
Do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, I.
Dave Spina, I.
Take a singer, I. David Sutton, I.
Jessica Thor and I.
All right. All set.
That's fair.
Um.
Fast as I can work.
Seven twenty, public hearing, planning board review and discussion of the South Lake twenty forty master plan final draft. Consideration of its adoption. Um. If I understand correctly. We have comments back from EBPC. Um, sort of finalizing. The document. Um. But they've only recently been received, so everybody hasn't had a chance to go through them, um, and ensure that the plan is. Or that everything is all set. So I think the plan will be to. Move this on to the next meeting, at which time we can kind of combine it with. Um. The use, uh, Ken Kamea can be here. He can, he can go through it, um, sort of briefly. So that we can approve the plan and he can also discuss, um, you know, his involvement with regard to the, um. What's the terminology?
Zoning diagnostic.
Zoning diagnostic, um, so. Um, we can discuss all those in one shot at the next meeting. So. Do I hear a motion to continue the public hearing for the master plan final draft? Discussion and review to. Seven twenty P M on. All right.
Yeah, that's.
You know, no, because we can put it up at seven ten, huh?
Yes, we can.
Why don't we put it at seven ten P M on, um, March twenty-sixth?
Dave Spina so moved.
Take a singer, second.
Do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, I.
Dave Spina, I.
Take a singer, I.
David Sutton, I.
Jessica Thor and I.
Okay. Um. Why don't we do that sign permit? I just don't think we're going to be able to quickly.
Sure.
Do either crepes or. The commercial recreation stuff.
In the moment, I'll bring up.
Yep.
Um. Ah, look at that, still sharing my speech. What else have I been sharing? I've been working long. Okay, uh, so we have. A sign. Permit application review. Uh, for Polo Realty, um. This is the building, Pennant and Drive, uh, of B and E Tool. Uh, two years ago, we approved signage in the same location for, uh, a business, um. Under B and E called Cadence Aerospace. Um, and so this essentially is the same submittal, different information. Uh, the one substantial change is that this portion, um, of the front beside is a foot in change shorter than. Uh, what we reviewed and proved in two thousand twenty-two. So that's the, uh, front signage. We're well under thresholds for call, uh, the face, uh, square footage to, uh, building, excuse me, to, uh, business signage. And there's a sign we'll have over the entrance specific to that business entity.
These are just traditional signs, not. Backlighted, not in any way, they're, um, not lighted, uh, externally for any. At any way.
Look.
Okay. All right, uh, any questions from the board?
No. It's simple, it's fine.
There you go.
There you go.
I mean, it's a lot of stickers.
Do I hear a motion for a positive recommendation for the? Uh, the sign proposed for ten Hudson Drive.
Dave Spina so moved.
Take a singer, sir.
Uh, do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty.
Dave Spina, I.
Take a singer, I.
David Sutton, I.
Jessica Thor and I.
All right. All set, uh, why don't we? Grab the minutes too and just get that out of the way. Uh, any additions, comments, questions about the minutes for? February twenty-seven. Everybody's good?
Okay.
Those include my edits, sorry.
Yep. Okay.
You.
I'm good.
Let's be, let's not anybody's throats.
Um, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes for February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four?
Dave Spina so moved.
Take a singer, second.
Do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, I.
Dave Spina, I.
Take a singer, I.
David Sutton, I.
Jessica Thor and I.
Can we ever get back to going to sign these on, when they're wrong, then, anytime?
Do you wish to? Well, you bring up a good point right there because the question was raised, uh, Diane, you may not be aware, there's such a, uh. At this point, a couple of years back, something that came out of the. Covid nineteen, uh, era was the ability to. With your, uh, rather, I should say, with the planning board's acknowledgement and permission, we moved electronic signatures, um. For the vast majority of our, uh, documents. Um, so having said that much, uh, as a new member, you fall under that umbrella of action that was taken for them. So, uh, little did you know that you're signing these stuff.
Okay. You should make sure then that Diane approves that motion as her signature. To these.
For the minutes?
Yes.
So on the previous motion for approval of those minutes, we. I, 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 I am a registered state.
Well done. Okay.
All.
Yeah.
Um. A few more minutes before we can open up to seven thirty. Uncharted ground where.
I have a planning board number comment.
That would be, we gotta keep this real, keep the trickle down, go ahead, what do you have?
I just wanted to make sure there was a. Tiner Valley Planning Commissioners Meeting that was had a couple of weeks ago and we received. A pretty thorough explanation of the proposed Affordable Homes Act that is making its way through state legislature at the moment. Um, there includes lots of things, including capital authorizations, tax credits and policy initiatives. Of which two would be immediately on our radar if they pass without change as proposed. And that includes ADUs under nine hundred square feet by right. Um, as well as, uh, change to pass inclusionary zoning by a simple majority instead of a two-thirds supermajority at our legislative. Sessions, so at our annual town meetings. So just be aware that that's coming down the road and we may want to, when speaking with Ken at the next meeting, really hit home about where we could make some additions to the ADU. Uh, language so that we have a. Bit of control of that apple when it's first come down.
Okay.
Thank you, John.
Well, um. Well, the other thing that's sort of. In the background, um. Absent Diane, any, there was no discussion. I didn't get a chance to listen to the meeting from last night. Uh, I assumed that. The old item about the implementation committee was just passed on to after Doug and I have a conversation.
Wait, or be.
Yeah, um, which we haven't had to do yet, so, uh, or haven't had time to do yet, so. Um. Uh, for the discussion at the last select board, uh, Doug and I will. Sit down and talk through. You know, issues related to that implementation committee and try to come up with a. Solution. I'll certainly, uh, report back to the board members and, and talk through. What the proposal will be and we can kind of go from there, but that's. That'll happen hopefully sooner than. I don't know, any edits sometime. Um. Okay. Um. All right, so why don't we get to? Seven thirty, public hearing. Proposed amendments to the chapter one eighty-five, section twenty-eight, non-conforming use of structures. Jessica. You've. Took the laboring ore on this. And.
Scotty will be pulling up something.
Yes.
So it's a use for us to take the under at. Have there's some more input?
Okay, and I'll let you kind of walk. Through it if you wish, or John can. I don't care either way.
We'll be driving that car.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Give it back to you, John.
As always.
Just one moment. Think well, extra time I would have had to see it up.
Don't worry, it's not like everybody's looking at you.
Let's. Try again.
Really, all you did was get it right to seven thirty, so we're actually timing started. So I appreciate it.
Okay. Let me get a better zoom level for. Those, maybe. Only. Okay. One second, please. Okay. Uh, so. We're going to see. Proposed changes to one eighty-five twenty-eight, uh, highlighted in a tracked format here. Um. The first point of discussion, uh, relates to. Abandoned or discontinued uses. The suggested. Revision is to go from a time period of one year, which I believe, uh, through reflection of the last meeting was, um, was tight. A lot, a lot of things need to happen, I suppose, over the span of. Uh, one year. So the, the understanding that there's an inclination to, uh, broaden that to a certain degree.
And just to, I guess. Back up and put in context, it's still the structure of. With not with one there, it's still the structure of. Um. They are. Uh, they may be continued except. Um, and they can't be, but they can't be changed or altered except as allowed within this. By law, right? I mean, that's the structure is you can't. The only way you can change or alter. Is or even continue, I suppose, after three years, right? I mean, with the, with the year. Uh, prohibition is under this chapter.
That's right. We'll, we'll see a little more language, uh, developments, go through this, but look at, uh, or rather, open up discussions for. Those opportunities of flexibility, but everything, uh, about those. Changes, expansions, alterations, and in some cases, uh. Resumption.
Okay.
Uh, is fairly controlled under this chapter.
Okay. All right.
Okay, so, uh. The, uh, excuse me. Item B, one of the section talks about, uh, reconstruction. A restoration, uh, in the case of, uh, some catastrophe. And in light of the fact that suggested timeframe for. Um. For the, rather, before a, a bit of not conforming use of laps, it'd be three years. Uh, this is, uh, expanded as well from twenty-four to thirty-six months. Uh, it also adds an opportunity. For the planning board to permit changes in the footprint. Upon a finding, uh, by special permit or in a special permit that the change will not be more detrimental to the neighborhood or shall result in a use more in keeping with the character of the surrounding properties. So to build a little bit of flexibility, uh, with planning board review. And, um. To any, we call it reconstruction effort to attach to.
The, um. I think I agree with the exten- extending the completion months. It may be worth the putting here since completion is being used. A little bit of a. Uh, discretionary buffer for the board. To allow that to be extended. Um. You know, for good cost, right? But I mean, if there's. Supply chain issues, if there's labor issues, if there's whatever else that we've seen over the last handful of years, right?
Should we change it instead? So then instead of shall be completed, shall be commenced?
I don't know. I don't like that because then you get the shovel in the ground and you're commencing, right? But I mean, I do think having. Uh, pushing it, but then at least having some discretion to. I mean, because, uh, under this, it's shall be done thirty-six months. And if you face some issue that. You're trying a good faith to complete something and you can't get it done. You know, and get a C O because of some issue, then. I, I don't necessarily want to penalize someone for that, um. I I don't necessarily want to penalize someone for that, um but. Um so I mean, it's just food for thought. I just wanted to at least raise it while we're going through it so that in part, so I don't forget it later on, um but.
Yeah.
There's what?
You can see the board.
Yep.
Uh with respect with. It's been my experience in the past where a variance would be required for something of this nature for the patient. That uh request for a branch would be made to avoid, so to keep the existing. And then to come back in this as far as we have these issues and assortments. But it still, it still gives property in there, you know, uh a definite and something to shoot for. And yes, they can do a variance, but they would be need this much time to set. There's only border adjustment.
Yeah, no, and so it it's a good point. So I, you know, the way I understand it, and I have to go back and look and make sure that I'm right. At least with the way our bylaws are set up is. We really can't extend timeframes absent some discretion within the bylaw. And timeframes are not necessarily in the purview of the Board of Appeals. They are more feet and inches as far as variances. Um so I'm not sure they have the ability, though I I could be wrong, but I'm I've always in my head understood. The Board of Appeals to simply be, at least in this way this town is set up, to be feet and inches, right? So if you need a setback. You can get into a setback, you can go to the Board of Appeals and and get that. I'm not sure they can change timeframes. I think that has to be in the bylaws, but it's a good point and. Um you know, we'll certainly look through it to see whether that is a path forward rather than put in something into here. So uh because I may, it basically would already exist and we don't need to put it in here if they have that ability, so. Alright, um. John, if you wanna keep going here.
Sure thing.
Absolutely. I mean, I, you know, I'm hopping in, so if anybody else needs to hop in. On sections, I just think it's easier for me to sort of get it on the record now and then. Not forget it.
Do you take the public comments?
I don't, in doing it this, in doing. The way we're doing this, I think it makes more sense as we're going section by section to kind of, if there's public comments. People can hop in just because it's a more productive way to go through this. So if you have something. On each, you know, as we go through each section, you want to hop in, please.
Think about maybe a certificate of doc- documents. Instead of where shall be completed.
Fair.
It's a definite.
Fair, completion is a bit amorphous. Um yeah, that's fair.
And I like the uh with that in mind, I would go through the thirty six minutes. The way things are now with availability of materials and this and that, it's crazy how things stand. If they need a variance or setback or whatever, it could just be. That's a process that runs through the Board of Appeals, takes six months. Stuff goes on.
Okay. Alright, um. Want to move on to see?
Sure. Um okay, so this particular section, the board uh I think has some. Deep familiarity with where the opportunity to change, extend or alter. A nonconforming use structure and or law. Um can only be granted by this planning board. If it finds such change, extension or alteration shall be equally or more appropriate to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming use or structure. And as such change, extension or alteration shall not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than existing, existing nonconforming user structure. So the suggested change to this section would be to remove. Language that constrains those changes, extensions or alterations to. Within the original footprint or foundation. Of said structure.
Okay, um just as we're going through it, one thing that I. You may want to do, and this may be a conversation with Mark. Uh backline. It always struck me that 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 parentheses, but shall not be required to grant. Is is legally redundant because of the word may. Um but also sort of creates the implication that. Where may is used throughout the bylaws and other places, and it doesn't have that parentheses. What does that mean, right? So. I never really liked this little parenthesis thing here. I think it's implied, but. And and then potentially is concerning elsewhere.
Kind of like that, or you can. Okay. See, one second here. You bear with me, that's also a bit of formatting. Okay, so the next revision uh pertains to the change of nonconforming use of structures to less nonconforming uses. As it uh. As it sits now, the opportunity is presented. That a nonconforming use structure that has been changed to a less nonconforming user structure. Um or to conform use structure may. Be changed to a more nonconforming use or structure. Or to a nonconforming use upon uh. Uh upon a finding by the planning board in a special permanent hearing. And then you'd see the similar language, that such change, central alterations shall not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Or is more keeping in the character of surrounding properties of the existing nonconforming structure or use to the neighborhood.
Think. What you're finding there as you went through that is that this should probably be written in better English than. And so we can work on that.
We'll get into more.
To me, I mean, this is just, it's the, this is the, this is the inherently needs to be changed, right? Because if you're going to allow. Anything outside of the footprint. That is inherently, you know, more more nonconforming. So I mean, it you have to change this and allow that same. Discussion here as you would, but that first part is a is a bear, so we can. Change that a little bit.
But we want to allow something that's become conforming to go back to nonconforming? Is that what that says? I think.
That is what that says. This is that would be a special.
It says to a less nonconforming or conforming.
Right.
And then so. I guess I first, you know, if at some point in time. It is altered tighter, okay? So it's not necessarily a bad change to its footprint, right? Maybe it's been shrunk, and then they come back and say, okay. We did this, but we need to add on this refrigeration unit on the other side, and as this stands. We have to say no because it's already been changed once, whether it was changed to more confirming or less not, like.
I don't, I get that.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking, if something goes all the way to becoming all of a sudden fully conforming.
But I'm wondering if you're thinking more. If you're thinking more of use and not. The building itself, right? And that's what I'm thinking.
Maybe.
Because when I look at this, I say, well, I'd be a little hesitant if the use went back to conforming. But then allow it to be not conforming, right? But if the, if the use was still continued there and it was nonconforming. And the building happened to go, I mean, I guess that still makes it, it's still not conforming because the use is not.
Right. Trying to imagine a situation where you became conforming and you'd like, you want to allow it to become unconforming again.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I don't know, I guess. I'm not sure I can think of one. Because I think, I think. If it becomes conforming, it's going to be both conforming in. Dimensions as well as use, right? And so. I mean, it's like if you have a business operating on a residential property, right? It's going to become a residential property. Why would you want that to go back to?
Right.
A business necessarily, um. I don't know. I have to think through that. I'm not sure that that, I think I'm, I think that I that. I'm not sure I can think of that situation where it becomes conforming. I think the less conforming makes sense, but the conforming doesn't quite. Makes sense to me. So I'm sorry, I'm not sure that situation exists where you'd want to let that back, but we can run through it. Alright. Anything else on that change?
Hello again. From uh L Mass, they have a statement here on the changes. Once changed to a conforming use, whole structure or land shall revert to a nonconforming use. No nonconforming use shall be changed to another nonconforming use. Except upon binding by the, they use Board of Appeals. That such change shall result in a use more in keeping with the character of surrounding.
Yeah.
That's why I talked that that piece there on at the end.
Depends on how you define use a little bit, but um how narrowly you define it, how broadly, right? I mean, someone wants to change from something that's. Pretty similar. I'm not sure that's a big problem, but. Um but yeah, the rest of that seems to make sense to me. Maybe it's worth having a statement just like that to sort of say. You know, I mean, it's implied if we take out that conforming, but maybe expressly stating it is the way to go. Uh Palom, you said?
Yeah, that.
That's uh copied and pasted there on like page six, John.
Okay.
I'm gonna scroll down.
Take full credit. There it is. There we go, changes. So that's the language.
Yeah, I think that's, I actually. Yeah, I gotta just gotta run through it.
To conforming, no go. Nonconforming to nonconforming, if it makes sense with us.
Yep, no, I think that.
And that's specific to use. Doesn't say the buildings.
Yeah, we gotta watch for that. Okay. Alright.
Let's see, so that brings us to section B, nonconforming lots and.
That's.
That's with the exception, obviously, section one, I think, uh really. Repeats parameters under state law. In with this, if you will, the rather odd language of saying any structure or building for residential use. Or state law says a single family home or two family home, uh that's mostly uh pertains to vacant lots. That existed prior to zoning.
Yeah, I can't be that many.
So uh no changes to those sections.
Okay.
Uh which brings us to some discussion points. Mrs. Thor, would you care to? Uh are there?
This is more just thoughtful stuff.
Yep, okay.
That's what my head, the inside of my brain is.
No.
Highlighted.
Lots of red pencil marks to crack and stuff out.
Um. But I think when it came to the lot sizes.
Oh, um below F, wherever we're seeing.
Yeah, I want, we. We need to make it clear that what we're utilizing for the lots is that it's not just a single family home. It has to be a single and two family. Uh and then this single family law exception language is also from the poem. By law that Marcus had sent to us. And I kind of just, I didn't know if we'd give more flexibility when it came to. Housing lots that may not. Meet the requirements in the R forty or the R twenty, and if we wanted to allow. For some flexibility in that, considering the push and need for housing in town that if. There was a lot that instead of being the requisite, is it forty thousand or something like that for a single family. And the business owner sixty thousand in the R forty, do we want to be able to say? And so long as the health inspector says there's enough space here for a well and a septic and that sort of stuff. Do we want to allow for that denser housing on a case by case special permitting basis? Again, inside of Jessica's brain.
No, no, no.
Expanding in the idea of what might come before us and.
But we also got to think about how that plays into the uh development. Right, so.
Right, and not necessarily for multiple, for like a development, but even just as somebody comes to us and says, hey, I've got this. Lot here that I could split into two that could make for two very decent sized, single family homes. It's not super dense. There's plenty of space between me and the buttered properties, but it's each lot would be ten thousand square feet less than the required in the zoning. Is that us or just can that be a Board of Appeals thing? And if not, how do we want to open that door for that possibility if if we do or don't?
Yeah, I just, um. I think it's a good discussion point. I just don't think it, it's not, it's not something that's going to belong under this chapter. Right? Because you're creating, it's not a nonconforming, well, I guess it is nonconforming, but it's something you're creating. At this point, rather than something that pre-exists, right? So it's sort of is by definition not covered by this chapter. Because that first section talks about. The continuation of use that happens before, so. Um I don't think it's. Bad discussion point. I just think it's not for this chapter. And it and it really does have to be. Thought through in connection with the development one as well, because it's going to impact that to some degree. I would think, even if it's just as a reference point of saying, well, you're allowing this over here, so why are you not allowing it? So and you have all those. Um you know, point system and to do the flex rest and all that kind of stuff. So you have to just think of it, I think, as. Globally, but um. Uh anything else to talk about in this? For this. Dialogue. I mean, is there? Is there um? Or is there? More concrete? Ceilings, floors, whatever, boundaries that you want to put on this sort of. Right, obviously, we are awesome, but we're not always going to be on the board. Um and so the question becomes whether you want to. Whether you, you know, I mean, if you give that sort of discretion of, well, as long as it's, you know, um um. Fits in within the neighborhood and blah blah blah. That's a decent amount of discretion. So the question is. Whether you still carry over some structure of. Or percentage of. You know, it it even talking, you know, just talking about dimensions, right? Do you want to carry over a percentage of, should it only be this much more, or do you? You know, it, it even talk, you know, just talking about dimensions, right? Do you wanna carry over a percentage of, should it only be this much more or do you? I don't know how you do it on the uses, but do you wanna carry over some? Sort of outside, you know, you have to stop here kinda thing.
I think that, or whenever. Whenever example comes before us is gonna have its own set parameters and challenges that. You know, we might say that it's reasonable that it's ten percent, ten percent, ten percent on this side, on all sides of the building, but then somebody comes and says, eh, yeah. But you know, the tree line is really only twenty feet over here. Can I, can I take my ten percent on the east side and add it and make it twenty percent on the west side? And how do we? Do that and you know what I'm saying? Like I feel like we end up going down a rabbit hole that the end result and the answer has to be. It's applicant dependent, it's situation dependent, it's location dependent, it's use dependent, and it's neighborhood dependent. You know, what a pre-existing use in one neighborhood? That then perhaps wants to change it to be slightly more non-conforming. Might be acceptable over here by the lakes, but it wouldn't necessarily be acceptable in a residential neighborhood on Feeding Hills Road, like. That's what I've been. How do we build those scales for a future decision to be made? I don't know that that's.
State your name and address.
John and I both have a primary professor in college, I think John Cole. And he had a saying, I think it's probably applicable to what you guys are struggling with. He said, my solution to the problem twenty years ago is my problem today. So I think to Jessica's point. We, you know, we got a bunch of smart people on the board now. They're awesome. Hopefully in fifteen years, twenty years, we'll have, you know, same type of people on board, I think Southwood would. I think. As you mentioned. Being so overly specific can be problematic. John, you know, before he lived his life, did similar to what I'm doing, and we went. You know, we went through multiple municipalities throughout Western Mass, continue to go. And were constantly tweaking in some, I use the term skate patch, but some in this valley don't have a skate patch. And they really want that at a discretion. So I think, you know, if you did put your. Branders on it, which might make sense, at least provide yourself a skate patch. In for those circumstances that are a little bit out of the ordinary that might be something we want to sell.
But the key point is that we're awesome. Yes.
Uh, two questions. If you have a non-conforming use and you wanna change it. Can you make it and other different non-conforming use?
Yes.
That is currently allowed.
That is, uh, well, that would be allowed under here. You wanna just go back up to that, um. Uh, one that talks about the conforming. Let's see. No, go down, go down, I'm sorry.
This guy right here, James.
Stop, stop right there, yep.
That's good. Thank you, Mrs. Thor.
Right, so right now is in this awesome sentence here, um. What is, if it's? You can.
Today, if I have a non-conforming panel. Tomorrow, when this is.
It's.
Today, if I wanna change that to a bar, can I?
You can change. It's gonna depend, I think. On whether it's considered to be less or more non-conforming, right? I mean, I think you can. I don't, and I'm trying to look. Oh, I don't disagree that that's a problem, but I, you know, as I read this, and I just gotta look through this again, cause it's never come up in front of us, so I'm not sure the answer to it, but. If this, this says whenever a non-conforming user structure has been changed to a less non-conforming user structure. That implies that. A, a, no, but that implies that a. Non-conforming use can be changed to a less non-conforming use, right? That sentence implies that. And so. Do you have a?
It's really confusing and the answer is.
Was Mike and I had talked some time ago about, um. Sign guidelines and now that we are very close to having a master plan in place, there's no mutation. How do we work that into the zoning by law? Can we say the board will use this discretion in referring to the master plan guideline? Something to that effect to give you some. Basis for that song.
Give a scale for future boards to weigh on.
Work that way, you could have somewhere that we will rely on.
And, and or meets with the last of our goals.
And I just, I get your first point, if you look back at, um, one C. It allows for a change. Um, of the use by special permit. Uh, if. The change is equally or more appropriate to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming users or structure and at the. Uh, not substantially more detrimental, right? So you can go from non-conforming to less non-conforming. As long as it fits into that.
But subjective.
But it is subjective, correct. Yeah, Rob, why don't you finish up on this and then I'll go to Jean.
Yeah, so, so I. If you're, you have provisions and you're not regulations to allow for a finding for extension of a pre-existing non-conforming user structure. If you have that in place, by default, what you're doing is creating an increase in the non-conformity given the use. For the property, the reason. Well, and I saw the language, you pulled out the language about extending the. But I think by default, if you're granting a finding or a special permit. To allow for the extension or alteration of pre-existing or pointed use by default, allow it. An increase in that non-conformity, because you're saying, you're arguing the saying that it doesn't.
Well, it just, I, but I don't. That implies that there's not a scale where you can say it's more or less non-conforming, right? Because this, this. By law, in, in, has inherent in it that there's some scale where you can say this is more non-conforming, this is less non-conforming. I don't know how the hell you do that, but.
But I don't think you have to say that. I think you are not saying that it's, you're not making a statement that it's more, that it's more or less non-conforming. I think you're acknowledging that it's existing non-conforming. In that you're allowing the use either to continue or to expand or extend. Or the, or the structure to expand and extend beyond the current non-conformity. And thereby, you're providing. The permission because you're arguing that it doesn't get, or you're making a statement that it doesn't currate from the intent of the zoning by law. And that it's not detrimental to the neighborhood and, and, you know, it's in keeping with the master. So, so I don't think you're necessarily deciding.
But focus on use, like I, and I agree with you on all of that, right? But let's talk about use.
Right now is a garage, it's a service zone, it, it's a purely residential zone surrounded by other homes. But it has long been established a business location of some sort. Walt decides to retire, it doesn't wanna stay at Carterage, but becomes some other business that doesn't. Increase obnoxious noise and smells to the neighborhood, won't. Have a major impact on traffic, even though you're talking about Route fifty seven and everybody who lives in Grandville and town driving by it every day, like. In that case, is somebody gonna buy that property and put up a single family home? I don't know that that's more likely. I would like the opportunity to say, okay, this business while also non-conforming to the zone and use. Makes sense to, to allow for this switch from one non-conforming use to.
And the only reason I think you have to do that, you don't necessarily have to do that initially. But then when you go down further into the bylaws, if you, if you have already done something like that, where you've already made it less. Right? And you have to make that determination as to whether it's been made less, then you can't then turn around and make it. More, right? And so it, it's like a two-step. Initially, you just have to look at the neighborhood and what have you. Presumably, if you meet that. It's less non-conforming, I would assume.
There's two, two questions that I think that play, right? So the first question. We do that, we get special permits to extend pre-existing non-conforming uses. We however are not allowed to change to another. So I don't think there's any provisions in any zoning regulations that I've ever seen that allows us to say walls corrupt. Like now, and we said we love the football facility beside that. So we wouldn't necessarily be able to, I'd say that's a non-conforming.
I think that's allowed here, though. No, no, but I, I, the way I read this, and I, again, I just have to go back and look at it more, but the way I read it is that would be allowed if you make the determination that it is. Better for the neighborhood and fits in with the neighborhood. You know, you are basically saying it's less non-conforming and we're okay with using it there, so. I, I think you can in this town, whether, you know.
To change the use.
To change the use from, right? I mean. And Jessica's example is a good one, right? And that he from a garage used to retail or whatever else, right? I mean. Probably less non-conforming. I think you, I think you can. I mean, I think that already exists. I don't think we've ever. Done it when I've been on the board, but. I think you can.
But then also anybody considering it up until this point had to then read the next sentence that says. That was standing, you can't change any part of the footprint or anything. So somebody looked at Walt's garage and maybe wanted to say, I'm gonna change the use and, well, I can't even put in a step, so never mind, like.
Correct, so I mean, that's.
This may open up that change, but I, I, in particular, and. Being mindful of small businesses and how the world is constantly changing around us, that to build this level of flexibility is, is important.
Jean, I.
We're just gonna say. Non-conforming to a non-conforming that was lesser.
It depends on if you're reading it in the morning or the afternoon.
Lesser degree.
But degree of, you then have to define degree because degree of what, right? So, um. Yeah, I mean, I. Yeah, there's some. There's some work left to do on some of these.
Who's to say what a lesser degree is?
The board. Yeah, I, um, yeah, I mean, it's, it's. I mean, that's a fair point, whether that gets incorporated into the section two.
And depending on where the patient is possibly, you know, actually forcing. Relying heavily on.
Yeah, I mean, right, but that's, the board is able to do that. They have. In College Highway, they have the ability to do that. Do you need to?
But not tonight.
But not tonight. Fair. Anybody else on this? Okay. Alright, so I think. The plan would be to kind of digest this. Come back and. Go through and see if we can work toward a. You know, work, I mean, I think we know which sections need to be sort of worked on and we can work on the language of those and try to get to. Ideally, a voting document, but. Make our way there at least at the next meeting, so. Uh, actually, I take that back. We need to really. Make our way there a little bit more quickly, cause we're supposed to get it done by April first, March.
Question that they wanted all the work done and finalized by then and I.
I shouldn't have said anything a few seconds ago. And yes, the pressure's on.
Yeah, I wanna, you know, we gotta find out when the planning board deadline is and then we can sort of meet. I mean, I actually think we can probably find, get to a good point at the next meeting, so, um, I'm not too concerned about that, and if we. Need another meeting, then we need another, um, April ninth is not gonna be the end of the world for. The warrant.
Right.
Um, so. Okay, uh, so do I hear a motion to continue this to? Tell me what this thing looks like.
So I believe we've occupied seven. I have.
And when do we? We put the master plan on seven ten? Yes.
Seven, ten, three, twenty-six, yes.
I mean, let's just put it on for seven thirty again. Uh, do I hear a motion to continue? This public hearing on, uh, non-conforming uses to seven thirty PM on March twenty-sixth.
Dave Spina so moved.
The roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
David Sutton, aye. Where do we add the part about the board being awesome?
Mister Chair, I'm sorry, I do need to make one. Either.
Says something like that, you go to say something that I agree with my, with.
Correction now, or, uh, we, uh, just have two seven thirty appointments coincidentally, that was so fast that I didn't. Cause that's what seven seventy-one call is.
Already advertised.
Uh, well, it was continued from the previous meeting.
Oh, that's a seven, oh, that's a, yeah, 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 okay. Yeah, so let's put it on for eight o'clock. Uh, cause we're gonna have to do the master plan stuff anyways, it's just gonna take some time. So, um, do I hear a motion to continue that to eight o'clock on March twenty-seventh? Oh, do our roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye. Okay. Sorry, and I picked up on that too. Alright, what do we have next?
Yes, that's done, that's done.
That's done. One fifty-seven Feeding Hills Road. Proposed. Uh, minor site plan modification requests. Uh, are.
Which, uh, to that, it may be more helpful to leave the. Marginal the discussion.
Correct.
Uh, and that.
Yep, we'll put both of them on at the same time. How are you? You're next, Rob, I promise. Alright. How are you? Okay, um, so tell us what we're looking at and, um, we'll go from there.
Alright, um. I guess it's two separate things, alright? One of them about, uh.
You can kinda treat it together, if you, you can put it all together.
So, um. So one of them is, uh, cooking outside occasionally, not every day, but, uh, if it's possible. I know we talked to John, he said it would be mighty helpful to get what it's gonna be for equipment. I got some pictures, I don't know if you maybe gonna take a look, um. It's just examples, what, what it's gonna be, it's nothing, nothing crazy, but. Just kind of, you know, and we still have to confirm that for those departments. Let's say in the first picture, we don't like it's, doesn't have anything from top. Like covering from top, but this is how it goes, but we will talk to them and we can modify any equipment to. But before we're gonna do that, I just wanna know if it's allowed. Uh, if, if we even can allow to do that. Um, it's all portable, nothing gonna be ingrounded, so it's gonna be removable, it's just gonna be coming out, put it up, use it. Put it back. Put it back in the storage.
What are you thinking for frequency?
Um, at this point, we're talking about, we would like to be exposed once a week. This is a, a, like. Goal for now and just, we wanna test the ground, we wanna see how. Um, first of all, how everybody would react, we're talking about customers, neighbors, everybody else, maybe some concerns will come. Maybe some concerns will come, I don't know, like it's a smell, a noise, whatever, but at least we would like to. Even I think would be helpful, maybe we have like trial periods. Just to see it, but you know, in fact, can be like a half a year, I don't know, whatever. Three months, just to see.
What fires these smokers?
I'm sorry.
Wood, coal, gas?
It's all wood, we wanna use wood.
All wood?
Yeah, we don't wanna use any pallets, nothing like that. So this is whole idea to have on the. Go back to roots, you know, wood. And for smokers, for example, we use a fruit wood, like apples. You know, like uh, whatever fruit wood we can find.
He's our resident smoker expert, so.
So we maybe need some expertise.
Cook for more people with with the smoker than you do.
Yeah, sure, why not?
Please, please on one day.
So.
Okay.
Um, and second merit is a cooler, if we can allow to put like temporarily, like we talked last meeting. Um, we did some measurements with um, you know, I I don't have a map with me, but um. Uh, I think we emailed, alright, like a distance where we. I mean, yes, we have, we have to have, we have to be like seventy-five feet from a road, but that can be, I guess, pushed back or forth. Um, but we're still finding that if if that the case, it's just gonna be a trailer kind of that. The parallel trail would be more visible, and we're not sure how. It makes sense for people to see it, maybe makes sense to kind of move it a little bit closer to the road, couple feet. And uh, that way it will be more away from the people's eyes.
What are you thinking about putting it on there?
Um, yeah. On this uh.
How big is it?
Um, twenty feet by six.
Six by five?
Yeah. Uh, are are you making reference to the the previous sketch? Yeah, the, okay.
Yeah, so that's the, I mean, that's, if I'm thinking about it, right, that's where it can't be, right, because of the setback issue.
Yeah.
And that's the problem with that is that you can't put it in, you have to still comply with setbacks, and so.
Yeah.
Um, it, I think on that. Whatever that is, that that would be the. Uh, west side of the property, by the uh, by the water department.
Yes.
I don't think you could put it over there without intruding on the setbacks. So that's gonna be the problem if you wanted it over there. Um.
We can, um, I've got the the uh, the previous uh, previous filing. Uh, so this line right here ends up being your front setback line.
Yep.
All the way back there.
Oh, this is.
Yes.
Not from a road?
No. See, that's why it's it's non-conforming, right? Because I both been the use and in it and the.
From this side. From the road, seventy-five feet, it would be somewhere with you.
Right.
But if you mention from this line, yeah.
Uh, right, from the property line back seventy-five feet, grabs most of the.
So proper line is not this, but that?
No, I'm sorry, that's, this is the setback line.
Which is seventy-five feet from the front of the, from the, from the edge of the road, right? Not from the middle, it's from the edge of the.
Well. Sure, from the edge of the right of way.
Uh, edge of the right of way. Fair, yep.
And so the funny thing about this art is we're trying to find ways. Uh, for this to be permitted as a a temporary.
Yeah.
Uh, installation. Uh, one of the parameters in order to allow that is that it has to be inside. Um, or it can't violate the setback constraints of a property.
So, so just to be clear, so this line is seventy-five feet away from.
That's correct.
Because when we measure, we come up somewhere over here.
Um, well, that's, oh, there's my dimension right there.
I mean, and it's something you can go back and we can figure it out and make sure it's accurate, but if it's if it's accurate and it runs where this thing shows, then. You can't, under the bylaw, put that there. Now, you can, I can't refresh my memory, Art, what is? To the right side of that deck, it's that that pink structure there.
Uh, this is the walk-in cooler.
Wait, say that again.
Walking cooler is. A walk-in cooler.
Okay.
This is uh, old news, Mike.
Yep.
Just.
Yep, okay. But isn't there something there? Or am I, am I just forgetting? Or don't you keep something there, you keep.
staircase, we have two upstairs, right by this line. Um, we can, but another thing, we can rebuild that staircase, but it's gonna be a much bigger project, it's not gonna be for temporarily cooler. No.
I mean, it just, under that bylaw, right, if where that pink. Rectangle is to the right.
This piece right here.
I mean, you could put a trailer.
This is the.
Cause that's outside of the setback.
We have a walk-in cooler that existed already.
Then there's no room between. The parking and, the parking and that. Right, that would be, that seems to me the best location to put. That, because it's the closest to the building outside of the setback, right? As I look at it, I mean, I I just don't know where else you could.
Mm-hmm.
You could, I suppose, put it to the left of the deck, right? Um, in the back there, I can't. But that's where you wanna put a sort of patio area, right, down by the deck to the left.
Yeah.
So. They don't know how to.
And this would be edge of a patio type of facility, plus electric panels, it's on the other side. It would be easy to connect uh, power wise and wiring wise and all that stuff.
Yeah, I mean, that you just have to figure out how to get it out of that setback, because you can't put it in that setback under the bylaw. There's a bylaw which is.
What about the side? So if we can even put on the left.
But you have to keep it out of all setbacks, so you can't. You you have to meet that front setback, no matter what, right? I mean, you also have to meet the side one, uh, which I don't, is the side one on here?
Yeah, it's a little more faint.
Okay, it's right there, so that's not gonna be a huge impact. Um, at all likelihood, but you are gonna need to. Stay outside those setbacks under the bylaw, you can't, you can't put it in there under the bylaw.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Okay.
That I, we we can't allow. But I mean, I do think you do have the right under that bylaw. Um, to temporarily put some. Under the trailer by law, and I I think you do. Um, have to look at it a little bit closely, but. You have to get a permit from the building inspector, right? Is that what it is?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and the border health, potentially, um. But you could get a, a, you know, I think it allows for basically up for a year. Uh, but you have to sort of reapply, uh, I forget how long that for, but you could do it under that set, under that chapter, that bylaw, but. You have to keep it out of setbacks, that's the only part.
Mm-hmm.
Not the only part, but that's a requirement. So unless you can figure out a way to do that. You know, and again, I mean, that. I would probably put good money on this being accurate, but you can certainly go try to figure out and make sure that that seventy-five feet is. Indeed, sort of behind the building, um, and that can be discussed, but. You know, so I mean, that's true, you're gonna, you're gonna have to comply with that, put that trailer there. So. That was, uh, let's talk about the parking. We'll come back to that. Okay, but let's talk about the parking. Is that part of what's on for tonight or no?
Hmm, I I think with some initial discussion, uh, Art has that one called last on the list.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so. Let me just go back to the bylaw. I mean, I don't. You know, there's two questions in my mind, right? One is, um. Whether. Whether using the outside like that for occasional cooking. Is an extension of the non-conforming use or not, if that's used in the bylaw. Um. And if it was. I mean, does that mean that it falls outside the footprint? It's not, you're not really, you know what I mean? It's, it's not, it's not like you're adding to the building and anything, um. So. You're also doing something that in a residential district that anybody in a residence could basically do, um, so. I don't. You know, my inclination is to say. Um. That it could probably be allowed, but we would want to have some. Right, but I, as you sort of proposed, right?
Yeah.
Would be sort of as a test. Um, and sort of s- take stock of it after, you know, a period of time and just see. Where things stand, um, with some limitations that would apply to it as far as the frequency and. You know, timeframes or whatever, I mean, we can put some conditions on it, but.
Yeah.
I don't think it's. Necessarily outside of, I don't think it necessarily extends the use. Or extends the footprint in my mind, the way I sort of think about this, and. Um. You know, it makes me feel more comfortable about it if you're voluntarily agreeing to sort of allow for these. Conditions and sort of testing of it, and we can kind of go from there. I think that that's a reasonable. I mean, almost compromise, if you will, to sort of just see. Cause it's a little bit of a gray area in the bylaws, it really is, I mean, there's just not, you know, and and I think some other places have. Um, whether it's, I mean, I I think some other places have smokers or whatever else eh, in town, and so. Whether they're not conforming or not, I suppose I don't know, um, off the top of my head, but.
Legends old building there, down below. And they got one there. I know there's a couple out of town. Down the unbutcher block, they do it right in the parking lot.
Yep, um, so I mean, I don't, you know, um.
Didn't get Curtis up there, buddy.
Um, I don't think it's, I I'm not sure. Sold that it's in the bylaw, but I think if we can come to this compromise, I think that's a reasonable way forward.
Okay.
Um, so I would say this, um. Why don't we? Um, we'll put it on for the next meeting and try to. Um, with John, over the next couple of weeks, we will just kind of put stuff in writing and try to get a.
Yeah.
Sort of propose with the conditions kind of thing in trial period and you'll see how that. Um, goes, okay?
Yeah.
And then we'll sort of vote on it next meeting and we can give it a shot over the summer and see how that, for the, you know, outside period. Obviously, you don't, you don't necessarily need it. Alright, I suppose you could start it now.
Yeah, yeah, at least, you know, we can, at least for me to know what I can work with.
Correct.
You know, because amount of equipment, amount of hours, whatever, you know, like, how long I expecting? Because let's say I invest in the equipment, and I just only get two months, for example, may not enough, maybe. Whatever reasonable time would be reasonable, uh, maybe a season, let's say, I don't know, like six months or something like that, three months, I don't know. At least to kind of get the feeling, because everything new takes time.
Yep, and the other part about this, right, is that, I mean, we have to sort of recognize that we are in the middle of changing the non-conforming use by law. Um, which may change the framework under which you're operating, so, you know, I mean, I think this is also a decent compromise over that period of time. Until we see what the ground rules are.
Okay.
So, anybody on the board have any? Thing to add to that, any disagreement, any what have you? No, no.
Not yet.
Good, good, yeah, you're good.
Yep.
Okay.
Wanna ask back a little bit about that, uh. Which one, the the plan?
Yeah, this is what, um, yeah, this is what we.
Oh, sorry.
Since we go behind this line, so can we put here? That uh, temporary one. Behind that, that line?
Um. And it meets the setback on the side.
Yeah. If it meets side back and.
Give me a minute, let me just.
Back in the back.
Go back. Um. Sorry.
And I don't know if, um, let's see, so we need to be involved with somebody with pinpoint exact. You know, I mean, I don't wanna be like, oh, we fit when one way or another, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
My main concern about um, electricity, which I don't wanna hang wires, because it's a, let's tree branch. If I can at least even temporarily maybe dig something put there, I don't know that. I can talk to building department just to find out if, because it's still draw power, and I don't wanna power cords, you know, hanging or. You know, something like that. We can, we can nicely dig something and put like temporarily, let's say, electric outlet or something.
That would make sense that that.
Yeah, yeah, and we can work with building department, make sure it's all safe and, you know, checked and stuff.
Yeah, just but keep in mind that it is a temporary.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Um.
It just, um.
So, um, by definition, under this section. Um.
You examining the.
Yeah.
Last five words.
As a matter of right?
Hmm, I think, but if it was intended to be specific. To the by right uses, I would think that we would have different. As it sits right now. Yeah, I I added that one.
You're right.
That's why.
No, you're right, yep.
Worked down today's date.
It's recorded, um, yeah, so, um. I think you have a right under section thirty-two, which is the trailer section of the bylaw, um, to. Use a trailer temporarily. Um. Let's see. I just wanna read you the right, so you know what it is, um. In the case of a trailer to be used for carrying on a business, and in the case. The case of a trailer to be used for carrying on a business under this section, including a trailer used for storage of inventory or merchandise. Um, building inspector may issue success permits in appropriate cases for up to three hundred sixty-five days. Provided there is sufficient area for loading and unloading, plenty of sufficient area for loading and unloading. Parking and the trailer can meet any setback requirements of the zoning district, okay? Merchandise, merchandise and inventory, not a hazardous material, which I assume you can meet, um. It can be sold in a district of the matter of right, which you can, because you are a non-conforming use in that district. Um. So. It's not something we need to. Um, permit you to do, it's something you need to apply to. The. Let's see. Building inspector and the board of health. Okay, um, may very well be something we have to figure out. The application for, that probably has not often been.
That's again.
Applied for, but um, but you know, it will have to go through those two departments, you'll have to get permits under those two departments.
Okay.
And then you, you know, it will be, uh, I don't know. How long they allow it for, but it'll be for a limited period of time.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Okay, so that will work seventy-five feet.
As long as it's.
Building department.
And over from the side, right? So wherever that side setback is, what is it, twenty? Twenty?
Oh.
Uh, none of them, it's.
We'll find out.
Whatever it is, as long as you're not in any of the setbacks, you're fine.
Yeah, because I may gonna take, because like I see over here, it seems like it's measured now. Yeah, because I may gonna take, because like I see over here, it seems like it's measured not not from a road, because we measured from a curve. And seems like we have property goes into the property.
That's correct.
Yeah, this is a problem.
Okay, you know, what you need to keep in mind. Too, right, is that you do have a right to put that there. Onto the bylaw. You still have. Um, bylaws which would apply for noise and odors and whatever else, right, and that not odors, that's. Doesn't necessarily apply to the law, but you have to keep in mind. You know, noise bylaws and and we're.
No, I have it.
With an old.
No, I have a trailer, so this is why.
Nice problem and bad neighbor issues for you, because we want to be able to to do this without it.
So to the extent you're putting it where you're thinking about putting it and not to the other side of the building, last parking lot.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, you're gonna have more potential for. Noise that impacts the neighbors, and that is a different issue, so. You know, just keep that in mind, I'm not saying that you can't. You do have a right under that bylaw to go to the building inspector and to the board of health and get permits. Um, but just. You know, keep in mind that there are other requirements and and impacts that may. Um.
Okay.
Uh, you know, affect you in the way where you put it, so.
Okay.
All right.
Anything.
Like, that's it.
But regarding the parking, so I don't know if you want to guys tell me if you like.
Let's um, if you have something to say, I can. Sure, so. The feedback I've provided, if I may, uh, to board members. Um, and let's, so what I'm showing right there on the screen there, that's the suggestion, right?
Yeah.
Get uh. Establish the area for employee parking. Um. In referring to Mr. Salvini's plan. That access road doesn't lie entirely within. The Crepes Tea House property, so this line right here, that's the one edge of the gravel and that's the other. Um, and is actually established as a uh an easement um across your property. Uh, so what that means is that in order to. Have some off street parking, you'd have to be working with a. A new configuration of that curb cut. Uh, it can work in concert with the portion that's on your property, uh, but that's something that would definitely need. Um, some careful design, uh. And show a plan so we can share it with the save, the police safety officer and the fire department. Uh, in DPW looking at the site distances either way, um, one factor. That I haven't quite landed on yet, but let's just start, let's be conservative, right? Uh, we have parking, the interior portion of your property. Uh, there's the potential that there's going to be. Two-way traffic, someone entering and leaving at the same time. So that's a scenario that needs to be accommodated. The most conservative um aspect of that uh is. Managed in our parking lot um. Design parameters, where you have to construct something on the order of a twenty-four, twenty-six uh feet, I forget what it is. Um, in width. Uh, to allow for access uh in and out. And there would be to be some screening, there's uh an element of making sure that there's that the adjacent property is screened. So what that does, that ends up pushing, if you will, the access drive. Um. Although could use a portion of what's the existing out there, it would virtually be ten feet off the property line. Uh, for that portion. Uh, then you have the width of the access drivers up and then the park, so it's uh. I'm gonna say, this is a design exercise that's gonna use up a fair amount of area. Um, as practical and simple as it looks out there on the ground, uh, the the presence of the property line down the middle, that access rope. Uh, really shifts the opportunity, but that's something that I think. You'd be best served to have your consultant, you know, take a look at and see what happens if they can um.
My question if it's doable.
It may, it may be.
I think that's.
If it's maybe, again, at least try, start going, asking what the consequences, because at least we will know doable or not doable. It's not doable, okay, we'll not touch it.
And I'll I'll send you the parameters, like I kind of inform and listed them off right here, but I'll send you the parameters that I I've looked at.
And I, I mean, the other part about it, just given the way this is set up, is if it is doable. It is going to be for employee parking only, and there has to be some. Um.
Signs.
Signs or, you know, designation that that's, you know, what it's for, so it doesn't end up to be.
Sure.
Used as, uh, you know, in and out parking for people.
Yeah.
Coming, so.
Okay.
The less than the intensity.
Correct.
I got you, okay, because even if we have a walking cool area, we still have to park a low, low. You know, laws would be beneficial to kind of, you know, halve that legally instead of getting in trouble. If we have a truck pull in and unload there for, not semi trailer we talked about, we talked about the smaller, like van which we have.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so that's it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Best for last, if you will.
Second.
What was that, Mike, make a most in the what?
No, you wanna close it. Um. Two thirty-three South. It is a lot.
I know, we will see, right?
Two thirty-three South Loomis Street, uh, Sonoma Campground Draft Commercial Recreation Bylaw Amendment. Um, by, uh, we're back in associates.
Now, this goes with the sheet gave us on our last meeting or is it different one altogether? Same thing. Another guy.
You're making, you know, a good case to be put on the master plan.
I got nothing going on.
Gonna fill in that time.
Yeah. Yeah. Don't, yeah, don't look at the monitor, second out there.
Something right near here.
Um.
It's reflection is bottom camera.
So Rob, just to give you. And I'm only speaking to my for myself, not for the board, but. My view of this. To sort of perhaps guide, you know, the discussion is. I generally think. Um. Expanding commercial recreation in this town, the way this town is set up is probably. Consistent with what folks want in this town is probably consistent with the master plan, it's probably consistent with the way this. You know, the vibe of the town, um, so I don't think I have any problem with the idea of it. Um, but, you know, I just wanna make sure that it's being done in a way that is. Um. Uh, generally applicable, that makes sense in the in the general sense and not necessarily just on a site specific.
Absolutely.
You know, so I mean, you know, that's the way I'm looking at it, so to the extent you can kind of. Talk through the proposals in that sense would be ideal.
Absolutely. Um, so by way of introduction, introduction again, Rob, get back tomorrow, I'd like to play. See with me on Jim, I believe it's Sam Morton, I believe he's still awake back uh. There he is. Uh, so so uh Sam is a um, he has a construction and management company. That, uh, soma builders that um, works directly with campgrounds uh throughout the region, you know, uh, New England, New York, et cetera. Uh, they have a number of projects that they've been working on, so they are working for the uh fairly new owners of the Sodom Mountain Campground. Um, we got them looking at first compliance issues related to kind of what was going on out there. Have a little bit of a tired uh uh campground in some regards, uh, a lot of opportunity, great. Location, frankly, in the region, there's a lot of draw, um, it's, you know, it's a successful campground, they think they can make it more successful. As we got to looking at some, some of that stuff, a few things in the zoning ordinance, you know, reared their, reared it, reared its head. For example, the pre-existing non-conforming stuff, so uh in this particular case, not to be too site specific, but just for a minute. Um, pre-existing non-conforming use because it's in the agricultural conservation zone. Uh, versus the R forty, which allows for commercial recreation, so right there, in front of the property, uh, for South Loomis, I think it is. Um, is owned R forty, back is agricultural conservation. Which if you look at the definition of agricultural conservation, doesn't make a heck of a lot of sense on the top of the mountain. So it's kind of a, you know, it's a goofy scenario, so we we're looking at that, so we're looking at the zoning. Then we got into the ordinance, we looked at R forty and commercial recreation, um, so. What you have before you this evening is the basically a printout of the commercial recreation portion of the. Bylaw, which is, which I believe is allowed in R forty and not in agricultural conservation. But in in the event which we will be submitting a zoning map amendment separate from this, a zoning map amendment. To try to get rezoned to R forty, which we think is more appropriate for the property. Um. Or maybe, uh, if that doesn't get granted, we might look at going the pre-existing, pre-existing non-conforming route, um. In the event that um, we remain agricultural conservation and your pre-existing non-conforming changes get. Incorporated, so there's a couple avenues for it, um, but. The while we were looking and because we were thinking of the R forty zone in the district, it made sense to. Uh, take a look at at these and we appreciate the time, so I'll, I'm gonna, I know it's late, I'll be brief. I'll try to go through it, um, if it's okay with you, I'm gonna skip the whole first part. A lot of one eighty-five, thirty-four, um, A through C, all makes perfect sense. The only item I would say on the whole entire first page is you guys should increase your fee. Um. But that's. It's already bucks and seems, I don't know what you could do for that, so. Um, there's a couple minor typos, I don't know if they're ours or yours, but under building permits. To state building code of the time of South, which probably means to, you'd say, or. Um, that might be ours, might be yours, I'm not sure, but I saw, I noticed, I noted that under F, commercial recreation, um. I saw this and I was thinking about uh Randy's previous use that was was really kind of the cool use. Pickball and all these other different things that are coming up these days, so I noticed under F, just something you might wanna consider. Um, commercial recreation shall include only the following permitted uses. You might wanna provide yourself a little flexibility if there's a cool new use that comes up.
Or have a catch-all at the end.
Yeah, 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 like that escape, that's what we talked about.
Yep.
Um. Skipping to the campground portion, um, under eight, so F eight. Um, the rental of campsites, and then we're, we're basically did track changes here for your review. Basically, does it part of a cur- commercial recreation operation, so I think. Camps, a campground itself should be a commercial recreation operation, not necessarily subordinate to. The, another use, so for example, if I had a ski, like the way I read the regulations, if I had a ski area. You know. Uh, it's out of mouth. I could have campsites, a certain number of campsites associated with each area. It's, area is not really well defined, um, you know. It seems like this, you know, it's it's a use in and of itself, but it, right now, it seems to fall under a separate. Allowed commercial recreation use, so that's. It's kind of tricky, so I'm gonna leave you with these ideas to think about and I can come.
No, I know what you're saying with that, exactly, yeah. Yep.
So, to me, it should be probably included. While it's included as eight, the way it's written as part of a commercial recreation operation, so we struck that. And then we, you know, left the rest of it, which which made sense to us, um. Good so far?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, under A, trailer, RV, you can't go without RVs. Um, this next section, which is gonna be under, let's, the third page ends, um. Under, under eight A, or I'm sorry, eight B, campsites may not be occupied between December and next following March. Um, so this is interesting, and and Sam could speak to this, but generally speaking, um, we, they. We understand that you don't want year-round residents, nor do they, but there are people that, believe it or not, like. Traveling nurses that might come and they might have a three-month stint or a six-month stint, and they're actually great tenants for that, or uh, great camp, uh, rent renters. But um, they, there is a market in the winter, uh, which is kind of interesting, in the fall, the winter and the spring, so. Um, they understand that we're not looking for a trailer park. That's not what we're looking for, but at the same time, because of the nature of the businesses and how they work. Um, there, there may be the desire, and they certainly have the desire to be able to accommodate transient folks. That are there maybe for months, but not just necessarily in the summertime. Or or the warmer ones, so uh with the technology and some of these things, that is available, so that's, that's where we were looking at that, so B. Um, while it's not crossed out, is something that we would like, you know, we'd like to look at as possible. Um, we think that permanent regis- regency, uh, residency, permanent residency needs to be be defined. I don't think it's defined, uh, there's no, not in your definitions, so that would be helpful to help clarify and regulate and. You know, if there's any, if we enforce, um, that type of thing. Um, the number of uh campsites, and this is another thing under C. Number of campsites in any one commercial recreation area, what is that? Right? So, we just said, okay, let's cross that out, call the campground shall not exceed, and then those numbers are obviously subject to your. Um, you know, your thoughts, also, we are planning a meeting with them. Uh, the fire department, talk about, you know, a lot of the issues related to these facilities and fire and all that, so you'll. Kind of incorporate that into hopefully in another discussion. Um. So, and then we just said without a special permit grant uh granted by the planning board, so everything's up, subject to special permit as it already is. Um, and this would be the same. Uh, that we crossed out trailer storage year-round is not permitted, um, right now, uh, arguably, most. Campgrounds function in that they will let people leave their campers on site for a storage fee. Obviously, they can't live in a year-round, but they, they, um, I did a cape, they do it, I do believe they do it all over, so. It just seemed logical to adjust that. Um, no questions or comments on nine. Number ten, we struck, uh, number ten in its entirety, uh. Except as above, residential uses shall not be, I'm sorry, shall be limited to the existing dwellings, one additional dwelling. And new accommodations for persons employed by the premises only, um. We weren't really sure exactly what that was designed to pertain to, um, but. Right now, for example, there's caretaker, um, caretakers quarters on the property. Um, I think most campgrounds have caretakers quarters and are allowed to do um, certain things, um, we. You know, maybe, maybe that gets looked at in in more detail, but we, for now, we we struck it and. You know, maybe there's something that needs to be added back, but we struck it, um. Pro shops and number thirteen, pro shops and retail shops accessory to or incidental to. The campground for commercial recreation use, so we had campground in there, since that wasn't in there. Again, per commercial recreation use, what is it? Um.
But just, just to, yeah. I mean. I get where you're going with it, but campground's not a defined term necessarily either, right?
I mean. It is under the state regs, um, there are certain definitions, but it would be logical to define both.
Right.
Yeah, agreed, absolutely. Um, and it seems to me that campground as a defined use should fall under. You know, should you feel as appropriate, should fall under those possible commercial recreational uses.
Yep.
Um. Uh, number, so G two, no structure except single-family dwellings and no recreational activities except a golf course shall be. Less than two hundred feet from the nearest public way, uh, nor less than two hundred and fifty feet. Um, from the nearest dwelling located under the ownership of the same, uh, on the same side of the highway, um. We just think it's cleaner to define setback requirements. From the lodge and accessory structures, and then obviously from the, you know, the campsites themselves. I think, again, that was probably something, the fact of the old planner statement, that was somebody's problem twenty years ago and. Our work was a solution years ago, and it may be a problem today. Um. Number three, off-street parking shall be provided for cars of all patrons, employees and persons using the facility together with necessary access. Driveways to public roads, all looks good, surfacing shall be a type appropriate for the proposed land use. Uh, and shall be treated to inhibit dust. We weren't sure exactly what that meant, certainly we don't want dust, so if there's something that needs to be done, but you know. We weren't sure exactly what that meant. Certainly, we don't want dust. So if there's something that needs to be done, but you know, there's there's uh we we just kind of took that out. The, at the end there, adequate access roads depending on the number of campsites and terrain factors. It says at least twenty-four feet in width. To a width suitable for emergency vehicles. So we we just twenty-four feet width is your standard subdivision road. You know, twelve-foot lanes. But it's pretty substantial. So in an uh you know, for a fairly naturalistic setting, it seems to that you should have. Some flexibility, maybe some one-way um movements of vehicles through. So we were thinking to a width suitable for emergency vehicles. Uh provided some flexibility there. Uh number five, banquet's meeting, stage presentations and dancing shall be held inside a structure. But this shall not prevent presentation outside of a structure of athletic exhibitions or contests or theatrical performances. There's no idea. We know it. Somebody was thinking that.
Kids, we used to, we used to start the peaceful playing campground, Templeton. It was like. Thirty people played bocce. Around the entire perimeter of the camp along the road. And it was wild. It was just like a big mob just moving. It was fun.
Uh number six, no entrance or exit from a campsite shall be allowed to move through a residential development. We just said all entrances or exits shall be through an existing uh through existing curb cuts. Maybe it should say curb cuts rather than existing curb cuts on public ways. Approved curb cuts, yeah.
I think you should have number four.
Yeah, number four, we don't have any changes. So the volume, but that was the volume of of, I'm sorry, the volume of sound. From music and public progress systems. And recreational motor vehicles shall be so controlled as to prevent objectional noise off premise. We thought that seemed reasonable. Paying both attention in this. Alright, we're moving pretty quickly here. So number eight, no person shall conduct, control, manage or operate directly or indirectly any. Campground. And we we took out recreational camp, overnight camp. Or commercial camp unless he. Is a holder of a license as a uh as specified in Mass State Sanitation Code, yada, yada, yada. So. Uh we just clarified it as campground. Oh, that's your regulate. Alright.
Uh Rob, there is something. Under mass general laws as far as campgrounds, that's sort of a defined term, a defined thing. So we can incorporate that.
Yeah, so there's uh there's state regulations regarding campgrounds as also part of health and. Well, Title V, I should say, regulations regarding campgrounds. And then mass DEP. Has regulations regarding campgrounds with uh sanitary facilities exceeding ten thousand gallons.
Okay.
And sometimes fifteen thousand gallons depending on the year it was built. Number nine, there shall be a minimum of twenty percent of total land area in a campground left in its natural state. We said there shall be a minimum of twenty percent. Open space areas left in its natural state. We just kind of cleaned that up.
I have trouble with that term. I would put it maintain. Somewhere. We think natural state is pretty catchy. Pretty dangerous. Falling down on their own. You know, so I think there needs to be something.
So left and maintained in its natural state.
I mean, yeah, we probably need to work with it, but yeah, I mean, it's. Like you can't create, let a hazard exist, but.
Keep the species though.
Uh number eleven, external lighting at the main entrance shall be shaded to prevent glare on and me enjoying the property. Animated flashing and oscillating signs are not permitted. Signs will conform to the rules and regulations. Signs in effect for town South, but maybe we leave the last. Part, but I don't think some of those are a big. You know, for campgrounds, as long as they can find it, there's GPS these days and you know, it's like. Uh number two, under H, uh approval of the plans by the Southwick Board of Health and State Board of Health. Uh we said it's is required before approval of the special permit. Typically, what would be logical, for example, in this case, would be to make sure you have a project, right? So you know, make sure that, you know, an adjustment or an expansion or a new campground, if that was was something that somebody was pursuing. Uh could be done. Um there is a number of. Infrastructure-related. Requirements, for example, Title V, or if you exceed ten thousand gallons per day, a groundwater discharge permit. Public water supply oftentimes comes into play. All of those things are like multi-year, potentially multi-year. Um permitting endeavors that if the planning board wasn't cool with things, you wouldn't want to spend time, energy and and significant amount of money.
Are you, the special permit indicates that you will follow.
Yeah, you'll, you know, so any conditions to that effect would be fine, but we just, it didn't make sense that it would be required prior to the issuance of a. Planning board special. I don't know.
I mean, yeah, it's.
They have a public water supply, but it's a, it's well.
I think that makes, I mean, with the caveat that obviously if the plans change based on the.
Of course.
The health that needs to come back and get that approved, but um. But I, that's always been our.
Yeah.
Feeling. We don't. You know, as long as it's it's a final plan. You go deal with the other boards after.
Right. From a critical path standpoint, it's logical to, you know. Probably conservation first and in concert with planning. And then, you know, we want to, we want to make sure we have the information. We probably would have perk tests and soil. Information and maybe even some preliminary well testing before we came to the planning board formally, but. We would want to get our ducks in a row here to make sure we were even designing for, because if we. Don't have a certain number of sites. Approved by the planning board, you can't really design a sanitary facility. Uh okay, so that one makes sense. Number three, potable water shall be furnished by a pipe pressure system with one outlet on each independent campsite and one outlet for not more than. Ten dependent campsites. And we just said ten, ten campsites. Uh instead of dependent.
So then instead of independent, should it be? RV or some other? Is that what that's supposed to mean, the difference?
Yes, yep. Not more than ten, ten campsites. Because each RV will have its own. Like an RV site will have its own hookup.
Right, so with one outlet on each RV campsite and one outlet for not more than ten.
Yes, right, yeah, exactly. Exactly. Number uh number four, sanitary sewer's disposal shall be under the supervision of the local board of health and conform to the state sanitation code. And shall be approved by Massachusetts Department uh of Health and we added. You know, mass DEP. So, which is part of the permitting requirement. The community toilet. Shall be provided in accordance with the state and local health laws. Um or whatever, however you guys want to refer to those, but that kind of cleans it up. There was a bunch of language regarding. To serve not more than ten campsites shall consist of a shower stall, that was, it was pretty detailed. So we just would make sure we meet. This, the the state and board of health requirements for um fixture counts in bathrooms and, you know, obviously sanitation in regard to. Uh san- uh some sort of septic systems and then also um we have to adhere to the state. To the public water supply. In that particular, in this particular space.
Do you know as? The. Either these health laws or the laws. Regarding campsites. That. Community, like showers are provided?
Yeah, there's very, there's very specific requirement per campsite and. Picture counts, et cetera, based on the number of. Number seven. It says no outdoor cooking, it had said and we struck it, uh no. Outdoor cooking shall be allowed except at approved locations. So we figure that. There needs to be some, maybe there's some language with regard to outdoor cooking. You don't want it to be haphazard, but at the same time. People have RV sites, the RVs literally have a. A fold-out grill, so it's, you know.
Can't have a campsite without a fire pit and that that's going to be fire marshal.
Correct.
Founded about where they can be.
Yeah, and we would, we do intend, like I said before coming back, we would uh, we're gonna hopefully meet later this week or early next with uh with the.
I can't imagine telling the family around a campfire. Sorry, no roasting.
Um, each each campsite shall contain not less than, uh it was twenty-five hundred square feet, which is uh large. Eight hundred square feet is typical to what Sam and Soma have been building and and renovating in a number of locations. So. We just adjusted that accordingly. Uh we scr- we struck, provided that there shall be. Not more than ten campsites per gross acre devoted to such sites in extensive of all public open spaces. You know, obviously, this is all, would all be by special permit. So all those review of sites and whatnot would be at the discretion of the, like the planning board. Which is awesome, I heard.
I don't know. If you have. Big as my house, then yes, it would be too.
Exactly. You know, you park two cars on the.
That when it comes to the designing aspect of this, that if you are going to be designating. Campsites that are RV accessible, they are.
Yeah, so depending on the, on the, the site itself. Uh that was the minimum. Um so certainly there's going to be pull-through sites, it would be a bunch of different types of RV sites. Um number ten, we just changed it from fifty to forty, again, in keeping with what Soma and other, uh you know, more recent renovations have done. Um we changed that in two spots and there are three spots in number ten. Um each campsite, number eleven, each campsite shall have an open unoccupied yard. Of ten feet along each campsite, it was five, so we added that ten. And then number twelve. So campsites shall be arranged so that there shall be not more than ten contiguous campsites on each side of the same street without separation by. Street or landscape strip not less than five feet wide. Uh the landscape buffer strip shall uh. Continue five feet. Wide along or near a campsite lot lines. So as to keep separate campsites into groups of not more than twenty surrounded by either landscape or public spaces. Again, very specific, um not necessarily applicable to any sort of specific um naturalistic or um. So safe, sustainable design practices. The idea is to design with nature on these things. So uh to the extent that that just was a lot of. Very specific criteria, it made sense to strike it. Again, each campsite within a group of forty is not. More than two hundred feet from a public open space containing not less than ten percent of the area. We don't even know what that really means yet. So we we struck that and then everything else seemed already in place and logical. Um so thank you for first of all, listening to us on that. Oh, yeah. Yes, you are, you're awesome. So. We are. We were hoping. Kind of twofold. One, we're going to submit a request for a zone change to. Our forty, which would make us in keeping with the commercial, at least the commercial recreation. If we don't get that, then you guys get the um. There may be an avenue forward there. But at the same time, it seems logical and we would like to try to be compliant and have a roadmap. Because right now, just back to your pre-existing non-conforming, the way it's written. You know, depending on how you're interpreting it, you really can't do anything outside of an existing footprint. So for example, what is, so the question became in our discussion with John and others, what is the existing footprint, right? Is existing footprint the property line of the campground? Is the existing footprint? One of the structures that you're trying to expand? So. It would be nice to have a way forward.
And and personally, I would rather it be conforming. So I think that the R forty makes sense. And that, you know, that to me is is the number one option. Um I'd rather go in that direction.
And usable land anyway being on the mountain.
Yeah. So I mean, I think that makes the most sense as far as the initial.
We'll submit a request to the selectman. My understanding is it will come before you. So at that point, we will be respectfully requesting a. A positive recommendation and then.
Yep.
Sixty-six percent of the vote will get us the zone change. Is it possible to come back?
You're not allowed back.
And talk about, potentially talk about, um. I don't know if this is possible to get on a warrant, but this would really. Um help. There are a lot, not only, you know, forget any sort of uh, you know, expansion or adjustment. Uh just the normal maintenance of existing structures, the need for. Um bathroom facilities, upgrades to those types of things, laundry house, et cetera. All of those arguably would rely on having a path forward.
Yeah, I mean. And you're talking about May.
To advertise and.
That's the thing, I don't know if we have time to do.
Public hearing on a zone change over the next two and a half weeks.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure you have time to do the.
I think we don't. It's technically, we 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 communicate with the selectmen's office. Technically, you do.
No, 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 I'm talking about the bylaw chat, like to do the bylaw change. You'd have to do a public hearing on. That. I don't think you have time to advertise, do that public hearing before the May. Uh it I mean, it's, I don't think it's gonna take, you know, most of the changes here to me. Make a lot of sense and are pretty reasonable. And this is. A prime example of a bylaw that beats eyes on it and review and it's a little bit dated.
Right, right.
Um and so. I don't think it's gonna take a ton, but I just don't think. The time is there to advertise, hold the hearing and get it on the May meeting. I don't.
Aren't you doing that with the pre-existing non-conforming?
Yes.
That's already going.
That's an ongoing public hearing right now.
So.
So that'll get closed, voted on and then. Submitted for a warrant or.
Okay. Um, can we look into it? Let you know if there's enough time.
If you can come to us, you can, you can do whatever you wish.
So we would do, we would do all the work that we were allowed to do. So taking any pressure off of your wonderful planner.
Music to my ears.
You two to figure it out. I'm not seeing the time, but um I'll leave the two of you to figure it out. And.
John loves life.
Uh yeah, um. And, you know, I mean, the other thing. We have to be a bit respectful to these. Meetings, whenever, as we get to the deadline for a town meeting, they tend to get. Longer and longer. So um you know, let's have some, we'll have some respect for that, but. I'll let the two of you kind of work out as to whether.
Okay.
It's doable and how it can be done. He will be awaiting your call with.
Thank you very much for your time.
Alright, have a good night, Rob.
Thanks for putting together the work and at least having it make sense and not so.
Can you come back next week for a couple more?
Yeah, I'm ready for the uh town center.
Alright, uh. You've had something else?
I do.
We're gonna call this uh. Board comments.
Um, so in my town planning report, I made reference to the fact that. Uh according to town council, we do need to hold a public hearing. For the small change to the short-term rental. Uh bylaw. So to that effect. And since my relaxes left the room, I figured that was me announcing it, but I figured the board. Typically, I write and submit this press and select board as a planning board, request the whole republic here. I'm looking for some degree of acknowledgement. And then we can close.
Uh so assuming that's, are you gonna run it by Mark? Is that the one you're gonna run by Mark first or we past that point?
Uh, Mark is the one that is. Telling me. That. The process. For this AG. Recommended revision goes back to town meeting. So I will clarify that, but I would like to have a. Get that letter off to the.
Get the letter off. Correct. So that's fine. Um. I just, I really. You know, it's probably worth, let's get, let's get some clarity. On what the hell exists in that period of time.
We, if we're, if we're, if we're running out of time between now and the town meeting because of our schedule.
Well, this is probably not gonna happen for the town. Meeting necessarily.
When you say this, the short term rental?
No, he wants it done.
He wants it done.
In May?
Yeah. Well, you know, we, we've done it before.
It is March twelve. You have to advertise for two weeks. Which we've already missed this week. So you are advertised next week, which would be. The week of this. Eighteenth and the week after that, which would be the week of the twenty fifth, and then you'd be putting it out for a hearing. You'd have to open it and enclose it. So there'd be, have to be no issues. And we'd still be getting it to them.
My heart beats stronger to hear your reluctance. I mean, that's.
Um.
But curiosity, potential pack, but what? Changes are being requested. Minor changes that can be handled in a quick opening close turnaround.
In this particular case, yes, it has to do specifically with, I believe, the ref. The appeal process and timeframe associated with it that, uh, we batted around a little bit. Turns out there's a conflict will stay alive.
Right.
Until the cleanup action is very brief.
I, that's fine. I don't, that's fine if we need to do it. Uh, but I would really like clarity on, because I just don't understand what exists as we sit here, right?
I like, I'm a gambling man, um, so. I'm, I'm not really sure either in light of this, but I believe the. If all the, the vote of the residents of the town south, like as, as our law defective as it, um, may have been with the AG review.
So we have a valid but defective.
I suppose, I suppose there's a, a hole, right? If, if that element were to be exercised for the deal, um, maybe there'd be some sort of.
That's the answer, that's fine. I did then, so.
We're gonna find out though.
Correct. For that three hour discussion, um, so that's fine.
Good.
You're up.
Make a motion, close the meeting.
Dave's been a second. All those in favor say aye. Okay.